Good afternoon. Regular session, Mayor City Council meeting, six P. M. Wednesday, November fourth, two thousand and twenty, City Hall Complex. I call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Mayor Park, will you please?
Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Council. Presentation number three, presentation city of Nogales bonded by Michael Vasquez. Mr. Varona.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I asked at the last meeting if, I just wanted to get a hold of what is our entire depth that we have, the profile of it. So we have a complete understanding of how much money we owe, especially if we're going to be facing some financial difficulties as we are going on, which could be probable, as I read over our financial report. So I'll then turn it over to Mr. Kissinger to introduce the individual who's going to be making the presentation to us.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
We have joining us on Google Meet, Mr. Michael Vasquez, he's our financial advisor. And he produced a schedule that I handed out to all of you, and it's also on the screen. I know it's kind of small, but Michael will walk us through it. Michael, can you hear us fine?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you fine, Michael.
Okay, I tried to join you by Google Meet and it not allow me, but so long as you can see the P. D. S. that I'm talking about, we're just fine.
Yeah, the P. D. S. up on the screen, Michael, and they all have a copy of it also.
Okay, so the request from council member Varona was to more or less report to us what is the outstanding debt for the municipal development authority, which is pretty much the financing vehicle for the city. And on this page, we have the most current outstanding issues for the authority. A lot of these are not new money, meaning that they were refinancing, so refinancing for savings. But nonetheless, these are the four outstanding issues. Now, all of these issues are secured by excise tax. The typical Arizona bucket that is comprised by that. And then, as Mr. Varona has asked multiple times also, we have encumbered the city's assets by the form of a lease as part of this credit. So in total, the city owes twenty-nine point eight million dollars. With interest, that's forty-one point six million dollars through twenty-three. That is what the city is financing. Now, what is the city financed with this credit? That is comprised by water, by sewer, by parks, by streets. This is the city's financing vehicle.
Mr. Vasquez, could you just explain? I just want to make sure the public understand the form of this mechanism that we borrowed the money, where we have encumbered all of our assets, including the City Hall building that we're in presently. Why do cities do this? I know the city of Tucson, as explained by you, has done it, but the only thing that they refused to encumber was their city hall. Could you explain the reason why cities, municipalities encumber all their assets like that?
They do so in order to create an asset bucket that is appropriate with regards to a loan to value for what it is that they're borrowing. So just like a house, I mean, you know, you can't generally, you know, finance a hundred and fifty, two hundred percent of your house. So you try and finance an appropriate amount. As I had mentioned, there have been some recent financings where a city has done, you know, a forty percent loan to value. They've combined all their assets and they've financed forty percent of that with whatever transaction they've done. Typically, that's not the case. It's much higher, it's closer to eighty to a hundred percent. Now, why hasn't the city of Nogales done this? Well, this is an older financing structure that occurred, you know, many years ago, many decades ago, where there was a bypass to voter approval. And so by the vehicle of the municipal development authority, the city was able to pledge security of their excise tax without voter approval. So that's where this vehicle came about.
Okay.
Councilmember Varona, any questions?
Yeah, the only thing, thank you for that explanation, Mr. Vasquez. I just wanted to make sure that we're all clear on that, because sometimes people don't understand that when we have to put up our assets, there's a reason why the assets are encumbered, because it helps the interest rate. And we need to do it, just like we do your own personal house, so that we can also do projects. I just wanted to bring some clarity as we start to listen to our financial statement for the next year, year and a half, that it's not going to be as pleasant as it's been before. And even though I notice that this comes, the payment on this interest and principal comes from the water and sewer fund? Is that correct, Mr. Vasquez?
No, sir, it does not. It comes from your excise tax revenue bucket, which includes many different line items, which are your city sales tax, your excise, sorry, your state share income tax, state share revenue tax, and a few line items below that.
Okay, so you can see why we need to watch our financial statement to make sure that we're able to meet those payments and at the same time make sure that we can keep people employed also on our city staff. So it's important, especially right now with this COVID, that its impact that's driving, because we on the border are getting hit twice. We're getting hit once through the COVID, and we're getting hit twice with the federal government shutting down the tourism that we depend so heavily on to come over into our community. So it's hurting us twice on this. Mr. Vasquez, and then this, unless we refinance for a longer period of time, we should pay this off in two thousand and thirty-nine?
That is accurate.
Okay.
And councilmember Varona, just as an F. Y. I., whenever we do a refinancing, since I've been on board since two thousand and fifteen, we have never refinanced a deal where we extended debt or anything crazy like that. So whenever we've refinanced it, it's been for savings, and we do it on an annual, per annum basis.
Great.
Yes, sir.
That's good. That's good advice that you're giving us, Mr. Vasquez, I appreciate that, that conservative approach of yours.
Mr. Vasquez, this is Councilman Hennessy. A question, so this doesn't include the water department and the garbage, and it doesn't include sewer department? There's no, those are separate loans? Those are completely separate loans?
It does not, and the reason it does not is because we're talking about different securities. So for this particular security, we are talking about that is secured by only your excise tax bucket. So when we talk about your water or your wastewater fund, your enterprise funds, if we were to do these deals that are upcoming with WIF, those will be secured by those respective funds, the revenues of those funds.
But right now, do those funds owe money?
Well, debt wise, not necessarily. On the wastewater side, you owe less than two million dollars. On the water side, you do not. And, well, I think that's a little short. But according to the authorization that we did a couple of months ago, and that we're about to reauthorize today, just in order to include the, sorry, the population for Nogales, which is required by WIF, I mean, everything, basically.
So the garbage department owes no money either?
Not via bond, no, sir.
Thank you.
And councilmember Hennessy asked to make sure the question, just so I can potentially answer that.
Just as clarification as to exactly what is owed by the city? And I guess those two million is owed on the sewer plant? Is that what it is, or was that borrowed for something else outside the sewer plant?
Well, that's a more complicated question, because the debt that you have via your municipal development authority, that is financed a lot of different types of debt. So that's financed water, it's financed wastewater, it's financed parks, it's financed streets, it's financed a lot. So it's a multi-composite debt.
If I can, Mayor.
Go ahead.
If I can interject here, Pat Walker.
Go ahead, Pat.
Go ahead.
Okay, I think the question is geared towards more, we're talking about pledges and what was pledged for the debt, but then there's a payment of the debt service every year. And we do charge water and sewer and sanitation for debt service. So that is coming out of those revenues to pay the debt service. What's pledged is the excise taxes, but the revenues are paying for the debt service. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that answers my question better, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Vasquez, I know that you're just making a presentation on the revenue debt profile. But as far as, so we can capture our entire financial debt here, how does the unfunded pension liability fall into this? Because I know we have fifty for the police and fifty million.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, councilmember, but it is totally separate.
So how?
It is a different beast entirely.
Okay, considering that it's a different beast entirely, what is your, how do we look at that to finance that? Because we do have to finance that and pay that off. And we have to finance this and pay it off. So how do we, as a council, mayor and council, how do we look at this financing? It might be different, it might be an entirely different beast, but we still have to pay for it.
Yes, sir, so your municipal facilities revenue debt, your N. D. A. debt is already financed. So that is something vis a vis your unfunded liability for your retirement system. So that is not necessarily a debt right now. And yes, you do have to pay for it, but just to be clear, I mean, you could potentially finance it. But as we discussed, I think it was a couple of council meetings ago, both Ms. Walker and myself had recommended, given that, you know, the P. S. P. R. S. that just earned, you know, half a percent growth of fees, and we would be issuing debt at approximately three percent, we would already be in a negative balance. So we decided to not discuss that as a part of Ms. Walker.
Did you ask Ms. Walker, Mr. Vasquez, to say something?
Yes, I asked Ms. Walker. Would you like to comment on that?
Yeah, sorry, I have to do the unmute. Yes, that is what we discussed. We put aside the fund in reserve in the event that we wanted to do something early. But based on the analysis we did and meeting with the actuarial company that actually does the actuarials, it did not make sense to do it at this time, because of the earnings on the public safety retirement system. So at this time, we just reserve that amount and through contingency reserve.
Mayor. That's what I have, I just wanted to get a complete understanding, I wanted all of us to have a complete understanding of our debt and understanding how we're doing our unfunded pension liabilities, because most of you here are going to be making some critical decisions in January, February, and March with this finance. And I just wanted to make sure that everybody has in mind the entire picture of our finances. That's all, Mayor.
That's all, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Varona.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. Vasquez.
Thank you very much.
Michael, if you want to get off the call, I think I can handle the two WIF orders and explain that away.
Okay, so you're dissenting, I might dismiss?
I think so, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
I can handle the WIF.
Okay.
You're dismissed, Michael, thank you so much.
Then thank you all, I appreciate it, have a good night.
Good night.
Bye-bye.
Number four, financial monthly report, Mr. Kissinger.
Mayor, this is our financial report, and I have Ms. Walker on our hangout meeting here, and she'll go over our financial report. I think we've got some pretty good news so far, so.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, what you have before you is our first quarter report for the year twenty-one, which will include July, August, and September. And I guess the good news is that we collected more in September because of the date and timing in August, where it went into September, it was August sale, but it went into September and they get both until September. And so we made up a little bit of ground there. But let me start out by saying that overall, we always look at what the percentage of budget is compared to the number of months. So right now, through September, the first quarter, of course, it would be twenty-five percent of the budget. In a perfect world, we'd receive twenty-five percent of the revenue, twenty-five percent of the budget. So that's what we're looking through for the financial report, see if there's any major deviation between that. And if so, is there any area of concern? So with that, we looked at the general fund, and even though we're doing worse than we did last September, through September of two thousand and nineteen, we accounted for that in our budget, and that's the main thing to think about. We're about five hundred and sixty-four thousand less in collections for the first quarter of twenty-one versus the first quarter of nineteen. However, we adjusted our budget to be more conservative in light of the COVID nineteen and everything. And so we're able to, or be about on target, about twenty-five percent of our revenues have been received, or twenty-four percent, about one percent difference. And that our expenditures are way under, they're at the twenty-one percent. So even though it's not seeing the revenues come in at exactly twenty-five, we're almost right there, the expenditures are less, which means that you're bringing in more money than you're spending through September, which is a good sign too, that if it continues to take a dive the other way, you've got some room in your expenditure budget that you can make adjustments on. Now, one of the things that John and I talked about was that recession plan or what we would do in the event things got worse, the different steps. John and I went through it, and we need to update it, because it was for nineteen twenty, and we need to update it with two thousand and twenty-one and talk a little bit about more of the categories and what we're doing, because we've just kind of surpassed some of those categories. This will be a perfect discussion to have at a workshop with council in January, when we at least get another quarter under our belt. We'll have October, November, and December, and we can meet late January or beginning of February and really have a discussion about, are there concerns that we need to make adjustments for the next six months of this new year? Or, you know, is there the opportunity to use some of that Arizona cares act? Remember, you recall, we reserved two point three million, with estimating to be a little bit short. So therefore, if we end up short on the revenue, we projected two point three million, but there's still be a hundred thousand left, but we're hoping to beat that, and maybe we don't come in in short. I went ahead and took a peek at October, and October's looking pretty good too, which to me is a great sign in the event that it's still going on and they're still closing forward. So just to kind of go over the numbers a little bit, we're about four hundred and twenty-three thousand under budget in the general fund, that's on table A of your attachments. And I talked about the revenue categories in more detail. And again, looking at what we took in for nineteen, it's a little depressing that we're not taking in as much, but the good news is we planned for it, so we're on target with our budget. The state share revenues, again, were a little bit below by about nine thousand nine fifty-three, or above the September budget amount by nine thousand nine fifty-three. Helps offset any decreases in local taxes. But as I said, the expenditures are twenty-one percent of budget, remember, if you broke everything out, twenty-five percent. So that's again, a four percent decrease on the revenue we'd be this time of year. And the only departments that went over was M. I. S., again, we've talked about this, I think every budget report because of all contractual contracts that are cut in the beginning of this new year, which use of percentages. And then the other department that's over right now, the twenty-five percent, is planning, zoning, and building. And it's because a large payment was made in September for the update of the general plan. So again, that will smooth out by the end of the year, but we'll continue to monitor those closely. The next fund is the HERF fund, that's the highway user revenue fund, and the overweight fees, where you can only use it for street projects. We're slightly below budget on HERF by about twenty-two thousand, but then again, the expenditures are way below budget. Same with the overweight fees, they're coming in a lot lower than they did last year, but you only spent a small portion of your budget, less than one percent, so it's not a concern at this point on that one either. On the utility funds, again, on the sewer fund, you're at twenty-two percent of your budget, which is about, you know, three percent less than twenty-five. So we'll continue to monitor and making sure people are paying the bills and looking into receivables and the aging, and keep you posted on that. Water fund, it's twenty-three percent of the budget. Again, the expenditures are down fifteen percent of the budget, so again, no concern. As long as your ongoing, your current revenues are over your expenditures, then you're not dipping into your unbalanced forward or unbalanced. So you're in good shape there. And then the sanitation fund, you're still about twenty-four percent of budget. And again, I just want to express that it's good news that we're within the budget, that you did a good job as a council in managing and adopting a budget that was reasonable in light of COVID nineteen. The bad news is, I wish we were doing as good as we did in nineteen, but at least you planned for it, and you're not getting yourselves into trouble at this point in time. With that, I'll open it up for any questions.
Any questions?
No, Mayor, I think we're the sound financial principles that we did during the budget here and are paying off like this.
I think so too, Pat, remember. That sounds good, and it looks good too. John, do you have anything?
No, sir, no, we're anticipating that meeting in January, that study session, we're going to go over, everything we'll go over that recession plan and find through those numbers and make sure we're all on board and all comfortable where we're at and where we're going. So we're looking forward to that study session.
Anything that looks like we're going to get any type of holiday money coming in in November, December? Does it look like that?
Well, that's what's going to be very interesting, and that's what makes that January meeting, mid-January meeting so important, because that will, we're going to see the result of what the holiday shopping, you know, the effects of it is going to be. We all know those are a big number in sales tax, so.
We have to promote buy local, especially now that the border is closed. We're going to need help from everyone to make sure that that's done, that people don't go to Tucson to shop, do shopping here in Nogales. They will help out, you know, as much as possible, we can do that.
Yes, sir.
That'd be a good idea, let's promote that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, John.
Can we let Pat go?
Yes, Pat, thank you very much.
Much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll talk soon.
Second part.
Okay, bye-bye.
Mayor?
Yes.
Is there anything that we're going to be doing? I know right now we're in November, but is there anything that we're going to be doing as far as marketing, the concept of shop local, help us, anything like that, that we're going to be doing, some kind of marketing technique?
Well, I have plans, the councilwoman and I, we're going to go and do a commercial on the radio, with both of us talking, asking people to shop in Nogales, shop local, and try to get it on there, you know, this whole month and, you know, before December comes along. And then maybe do some promotional on the newspaper and stuff like that. Just so we can keep it also local, not send it out anywhere, and try to limit the amount of money that we can spend or something like that. But we do have to do that, and I was thinking if we both do it together, you know, that we can probably put out a good message, so we're going to work on that. And hopefully, next week sometime, we'll sit down and we'll talk about that. I'll bring it back to you and let you know our plans here.
I just think that you might want to consider, now that all of these political billboards are coming down, that you look at putting up a billboard there so that everybody can see it, you know, help us out right now, because we need help also too.
We'll work on it.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
As far as opening the business and promoting business, is that just for retail stores, or is that including restaurants and bars?
For everybody, you know, hotels too, you know, that, well, with the border being closed, I don't know how the hotels are going to be doing, they're doing the holidays. But during the holidays, they usually fill up, because people do go shop to Tucson and here, and then stay here on return to Mexico. do go shop to Tucson and here, and then stay here and return to Mexico. So, so let's hope that we can get some type of movement. I'm hoping, that's all hope, that everything opens up in November, but it won't be till almost the end of November if it does get open. And I kind of felt comfortable that after the election, something like that would happen, let's, let's hope that that's the intent of the federal government, so that they can open up. And, and I know that, because I've talked to a lot of people from Nogales and Nora, I know that they're very interested in coming across and shopping here. And they have a lot of vessels right now, they haven't been across for a long time. So it's good if they come across and we can get some of that movement. That large flowing population that we get here, especially during the holidays, it'll be good for us. And then maybe we can have a better conversation in January, you know, when it comes to our, to our finances. We're going to need the help of everybody, you know, and if you want to do a commercial too on the radio, let me know and, and let's get together and start doing something within the next week or so. Work on that, okay? But we'll promote everybody. We'll promote restaurants, we'll promote hotels, and promote retail, and, and, and the tourism in fact, again, you know, trying to get some of that. But if we can get the people to stay here and shop here, we could do good, I think. We can, we can survive these next two months.
And a little about pictures of, of the city, you know, too, the goodness, the richness of our culture.
That's what we're doing right now with the Discovery, the, the magazine.
Magazine?
Yeah. We're, we're referring that this week, so we can get that going too. So. Anything, anything else? Yes, go ahead, Councilman.
Back about, what was it, four years ago, five years ago, we had a company do a, it was a, it was a, it was a short little movie about Nogales, and it explained everything we had. Remember that one, Connect to Nogales, or it was with the, and, and what, and the way it worked, it was free for the city. And what they would do is go out to the local merchants and all that to see if they wanted to advertise. And it was all done online on the internet and stuff. And it was pretty good. Doyle was the mayor back then, Mayor Doyle. And Eric Garson, the chief of police, they all talked about Nogales, they showed the produce, the warehouses, the local, the lakes, I don't know the lake thing about LA. And everything that was around the area here, it was, it was really well put together. And I don't know if you could pull it out of the archives and you didn't look at it just to get a good feeling for it. It was pretty nice and we could all see it, and maybe we can write my news for that.
Yeah.
And do our own, because that was a three-year deal or a two-year deal, there. Kind of a crawl. And.
Yeah, because we, you know, to promote something for the holidays right now is the time, but come January, we have to promote next year.
Yeah.
You know, so we have to, we have to start looking at it, you know, and, and there's seasons for promotion, so you can promote seasons in different ways. But we have to have one direct vision, one whole picture of Nogales to promote for a year-round opportunity. And, and I think that'd be the best thing to start working on January. But let's look at that, that's a good idea and see, see if we can come up with something. It'll be a different mayor though, okay?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I'm just joking.
You can just change the face and just give the body.
The face, the, whoa. You got you, did you hear that? Yeah. What, what, what do we expect at this time, you know? You know, he's a good man, you know. He's wearing a red tie.
Were you referring to a good man to him? Yeah, a couple years.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, he is a good man. Red tie.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So years ago, they used to have advertising in, in Mexico, in the southern Mexico. I know that, you know, people can't cross right now, but when they do start crossing, they used to advertise between Nogales and the city for all the people that came to shop here. And it was quite a merchant, you know, like Kate Benz and Bracklers, and they used to advertise a lot. So maybe the city can pull up, well, that's in the future.
Some type of advertisement over there.
Some type of, of a.
Yeah, because we're, we're going to have to promote ourselves, and really going to have to work at it, because this COVID thing is, has done a lot of damage. And, and, and not only physically, not only mentally and, and the spirit of the people, but the economy. So we have to look at everything, and, and of course, yes, we, we have to market ourselves and, and, and so that we can revive, you know, revive not only Nogales, but the state of Arizona. And Nogales is the port of entry for the state of Arizona, so let's, let's pick up on that. And, you know, for many, many years, Nogales was considered the gateway to Mexico. We have to pick up on that, we have to reopen that old mindset, you know, to get things going, because it's going to be very, it's, it's going to be crucial, we have to do this, because otherwise, you know, it's like restarting an engine that's been shut down for a long time. That's what's happened to us. And that's actually what's happened to a lot of border communities because of the closure. Like Councilman Verona said, the closure of the border and COVID on top of that, it's, it's, it's hurt us, you know, twice, you know.
And my, the city of Nogales being a government entity, can we advertise in a foreign country, like in Mexico?
I, I'll have to look into that, but I don't see anything, why we couldn't, right off the top of my head, but.
The state of Arizona advertises in Arizona?
There, then.
Yeah. There's my answer, right?
So you should be asking Councilman Verona and not me.
Thank you, Councilman.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman.
Monday, Monday, I crossed the border after eight o'clock, and the Mariupol border's closing at eight right now. And, you know, and I saw an effect, especially on the produce industry, because a lot of traders aren't getting back on time. Have, we thought about maybe discussing with CBP or about bringing it back to 10, those two hours would help also, you know, commercial-wise, especially and, and in the produce industry, to get their traders back into Mexico. But it would also give two extra hours of, of, you know, people coming across the border.
Yeah. Let's, let's look into that, John, so we can talk to the director, see what, see if there's anything we can do. You know, every time we talk to them, they, they always say that they're going to try and they're going, yeah. But, you know, it's, it's, it's hard to get this done, because I don't, I don't know actually how they work. Sometimes you think that they can do things from here, but it's not that. It's, it's done from somewhere else, higher up. And, and I've, I've talked to Congressman.
I don't know if I have anything to do with a, with any, like a truck, but I'll, I'll find out with you.
Yeah. Let's, let's, let's see what we can do.
Because I, I'm, I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure the, the produce industry is bound to get into more volume and all that, and they're going to start needing, getting those trucks back into Mexico.
Yeah.
Because they're, you know, I saw at least, you know, just coming down, down from the port to, to where the I-19 is, I, I at least saw at least 30 trucks that weren't going to make it to the border in five minutes at most.
Hopefully that, I got their stuff here in the US, they'll turn around and go to Walmart and load up and.
Bring them back to the parking lot, huh?
Haven't waited in Walmart, both in 24 hours.
That used to be the deal.
Yeah. Let's, let's, let's look into it.
Support each other, huh?
Yes.
Yeah.
Let's see what we can do. But yeah, that's, we'll work on it, Councilman.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? More discussion? Okay. Okay, number one, discussion items. Discussion, direction, and possible action. City on Nogales, coronavirus, COVID-19 guidelines. Two, extend closure of city facilities. Mr. Kissinger?
Mr. Mayor, this is an item that we've been putting on the agenda every month since the COVID crisis started, the month of October, I can report to you, but we passed a total of 183 new cases, two deaths, and new hospitalizations. Throughout Santa Cruz County, Mr. Mayor, that's, and I'm sending all of you the daily reports we're giving.
Yes.
You've seen a little bit of an uptick in cases, but nothing spicy really big or.
So let's, I, I also, I'm, I'm moved to, to continue doing this, this, for this next month, till December. Is there a second on that? Second. Any discussion? Go ahead, Councilman.
But yet our positivity rate is still at 16%. It's still high. Mr. Kissinger, is Mr. Betyer on the line?
Yes.
Could you get him on the line for me? Marcel?
Yes, sir.
The thing that I have a concern with still, as I've explained previously to you, and I even noticed it today, do you, I, I know you're, you're, you don't have the personnel to be an enforcer of policies to the public, but I still notice, I mean, if the council's going to pass this thing with tennis, and there's, because of the COVID restrictions, there's not to be any double play, and every morning I see people playing doubles there. Should we continue with that practice, or if they don't want to do it, just lock them up, lock up the courts again, instead of trying to be a, a spreader there?
Well, today, the group, the group that was there was a, a different group that had not previously been approached and informed about the restriction to play doubles. So, and they, and they left right away. The ones from yesterday, it took a couple of times, but they finally left. But if, if we continue to see the same ones violating the restrictions that were put in place and approved by council, then I will probably just let the city manager know that we're going to lock down those facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Betyer. That's all, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Mr. Betyer.
Thank you, Marcel.
Okay, so any more discussion on the side of? Here you go, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Goals? Yes, have a thank you. Number six, orders. Consideration, possible action of order 2020-11-065, an order of the council of the city of Nogales, Arizona, adopting an amendment to the city personnel manual, chapter 11, discrimination and harassment.
One moment.
Second. Discussion. Councilman?
Thank you. My question is for Mr. Massey. Mr. Massey, on section 11.05 investigations?
Yes.
I just want to have some clarity. You use the word observer.
Yes.
And, you know, I've gone there, and nobody ever explains to the observer, what's your role besides you can't, what, what's an observer? There needs to be something that has a clarity to the individual, this is your role, that, you know, that outlines it. So when they walk in there, what are they supposed to do?
We could create a document.
That, that's.
Just a, a very, think, you know, like a, you're a volunteer, essentially, thank you for your time, for volunteering. You're here to observe and make sure that the, you know, that the process appears to be fair and above board, but at the, during the process, you really don't have a role, but maybe later on, if it becomes, you know, a question where a witness is important, then they, they really are there as a witness potentially.
I just wanted to explain.
Sure.
One thing. My other question, Mr. Massey, is, I'm not quite, this is for clarity though, too. You use the word elected official. If in January, I'm an elected official from the Santa Cruz County Provisional Community College, and I'm an elected official from the Nogales Unified School District, does that prevent me from being an observer?
As is currently written, I think it would. And so if the desire is to narrow it, we could narrow it.
Well, I would think if you wanted to prohibit, I thought it was from the mayor's last, to prohibit city elected officials from that. Not every elected official, because if a state representative wanted, was asked to be an observer, he couldn't be.
Right.
So we eliminate a lot of people. I mean, the problem was because. Yes, Mr. Kissinger? Oh.
Yeah.
The problem was that you didn't want somebody like me, who's going to be part of the process, to get involved as an observer, correct?
Someone like you, or, I mean, as an elected official, I think, you know, the sheriff or county elected official would also be somewhat inappropriate as well.
Right. That's what I think.
But you're right, that other, just, I mean, city would be a good starting point if we have a problem with other elected officials, we could, you know.
Well, I, I think the city would be narrow, clean, and focused. Then I was just thinking off the top of my head here, Mr. Massey, think, for instance, Mr. Diaz, Councilman Diaz, is he an elected official or is he an appointed official?
He would be considered an elected official, but he was appointed to his elected capacity.
Well, I would, I would have something of clarity in there for us here, because we might have somebody like myself that'll take a discourse with you, I'm not elected, I'm appointed, I can go be an observer. There's nothing there. So just to bring clarity to, to everything there. And also, Mr. Massey, the concern was that on 11.04, number five, making sure you have the investigator in there, you have the person that's going to be interviewed, and you have the observer in there. But to make sure that there's fairness and there's no violation of local, federal, or state laws, especially as they do, that there be somebody from the human resource office there, or that if you can't be there, that the, the process is videotaped, or that it is verbally taped, something there to have for the record in case somebody comes up with a point that says, you violated my rights, you shouldn't have asked me, I know that the investigator's going to have, but that's their point of view. That third point of view, that's the purpose of having a human resource officer there.
Right. And, and I think this policy, Mr. Mayor, contemplates that probably most low-level investigations would be handled either within the HR department, or perhaps by the, say, deputy city attorney or something like that. So I would say most investigations are contemplated to be in-house, but where there is an outside investigator, that's certainly a good point. If you want to mandate it, I mean, I think as the, you know, collective wisdom of the administration, we could certainly maybe anticipate that without putting that in here.
Well, my response to that, Mr. Massey, is five years from now, I may not be here, you may not be here, Mr. Kissinger may not be here.
Sure.
And then what happens if it's not in writing?
So, I mean, I'm open to that.
Well, whatever you think, but I think that there should be clarity, and things should be in writing, because, you know, we come and go. And besides. Besides that, Mr. Massey, this additions that you brought up.
Yes.
Very well. You brought a lot of, tremendous amount of clarity into that. And your wording, in my opinion, you have brought fairness, a spirit of fairness into the process. And that's very important, so that everybody can walk in there and say, I got an equal chance.
Well, that's the idea, of course. Investigation is just trying to obtain information. We're not trying to steamroll anyone, because then you probably aren't going to get all the information that is appropriate to gather.
Well, and I especially like how you had it in there that they shouldn't worry, because it could be covered by the whistleblowers.
Yes.
So, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, with all those suggestions, I don't know if it would be appropriate to bring this back in December with the, with the.
Yes.
It'd be fine.
Yeah, because otherwise, they're going to be writing on this later and, yeah. You added so much stuff to it, I should have sat you in the room. That's there.
Mayor, we can, we can do this.
We could do, let's bring it back on December.
Absolutely.
Okay.
But we'll, we will have more things than this, though. We have several things to bring back to council in December, so.
Does that make a very big council meeting in December? Because we're in the holiday spirit. So, so, so now, he has to go into Mexico and start helping us out. So what do we do?
So, Mayor, what I'd like to do is have the record reflect that by consent of the council, we'll, we'll table this and bring it back in December.
Okay. Who, who made the motion on this?
We should know first, the second, but Mr. Diaz.
And do you consent?
Yes.
That it should be tabled, we'll bring it back this afternoon. Thank you, Mayor.
We have to vote on that?
I think with, I mean, with the consent of the council.
Yeah.
If anybody wants a vote, we can have a vote. If anybody wants a vote, we can have a vote.
You're fine? Sir Verona, you okay?
I'm fine. I'm just stunned that Consulman Diaz would say he wants to vote.
I think forsaken clarity would be a vote.
And the council, and the, and the city clerk would request a vote on the motion to, the motion to table.
Okay, let's, let's vote on it. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Sir Hanesian, you got your way. All right.
Does anybody know if Arizona was awarded divided?
Of course.
No, I think, I think they're going through a challenge, but I think it was.
Yeah, it was.
That's what I thought.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to bring clarity.
Forsaken clarity, then?
Yes, forsaken clarity.
Let's take a vote.
All right, number two.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Massey, do, can I participate in this next item?
Yes, sir, because there's a specific exemption under state law that allows unpaid board members to be voting on...
And plus, you're not gonna be walking on that side of the road anymore.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, consider, number two, consideration possible action of order twenty twenty dash eleven dash zero six six, an order of the Council of the City of Nogales, Arizona, approving an intergovernmental agreement with Nogales Unified School District, number one, recourse sharing for public sidewalk project. Second? Mr. Kissinger?
Mr. Mayor, this is an IGA that we worked out with NUSD. They've already passed this IGA, and now it's in front of you all for, for your consideration. If you were to pass this IGA, the, we can move immediately to start repairing the sidewalk and the parking lot, the old...
High school.
High school, the, the back parking lot there. I think, I think we're all aware of what we're talking about. We've spoken with a contractor on this. He's ready to go. He believes you can have, he can start work on this within a month after we pass it. There might be a very small increase because of the cost of cement, but I've, I've already reached out to NUSD, and we'll figure it out. When I say small, it's, it's five hundred bucks difference, so I think we can get it done this year. Staff recommends that you pass this IGA.
Yeah, I think it's long overdue. I think we should do it and have good intergovernmental agreement with the school. So, uh, uh, any more discussion? Go ahead.
John, is the city paying those, this, the fifty percent, any, any USD is compays fifty percent of seventy-nine thousand?
Yes, sir. Forty and forty.
Anybody else? Okay, here you are, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Yes, have it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
And the next two items, if you want, just for, um, to get it done quicker, you can take both items at the same time. I don't know if you can, but both almost identical, same explanation for both.
Okay, Mr. Massey, can I read them both?
Absolutely, without objection from any council members. If council members are so inclined, we can certainly take both.
Unless one of you wants to stay here another extra fifteen, twenty minutes, or no?
For the sake of clarity.
I gotta get back. For the sake of clarity.
I have to get back to the election results.
Okay. Okay.
Because we won't all be here.
Okay, I'm gonna read them both. Number three and number four. Consideration possible action of order twenty twenty dash eleven dash zero six seven, an order of the Council of the City of Nogales authorizing an application for a CWSRF loan from the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona. Number four. Consideration possible action of order twenty twenty dash eleven dash zero six eight, an order of the Council of the City of Nogales, Arizona, authorizing the application for DWSRF loan from the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona. Discussion? I mean, do you have a motion? Second? Second? Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, John.
So these orders are gonna look very familiar to you. You passed the exact order in July fifteenth meeting, and it passed unanimously. The only difference between those orders, this is just a housekeeping item, is we unfortunately, inadvertently, did not add two whereas's that's new to these orders. And the whereas's is that we're under fifty thousand in population and that our current population is twenty thousand one oh three, which are necessary to be in the order that you passed in order to continue with the process of the WIFL loan. But short of that, they're identical wording, word for word, these orders that you've already passed, except for those two whereas's, where we state the population. Staff recommends that council includes both of these orders.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Here you are, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Yes, have it. Thank you very much, Consul. Mayor and Consuls report on current events. Talk to me, Consul. Vice Mayor, you first.
I went around the city to look at some of the streets that have been paved by, by Street Department and public works, and they've done a really good, good job. And I also went to Monte Carlo where they, they started the one in, I think it's Cana Nea.
Cana Nea.
Cana Nea. And I know that the delay there was because of the asphalt. I also went with, with Deputy City Manager, Mr. Kissinger, and Juan Guerra, the engineer, and we looked at the, at the Old Tucson Road, you know, and that, and that defect that we have on that, on that road. And Mr. Guerra said he's gonna work on a, on a proposal. He was, he was actually proposing that we do the whole street, but then it's too expensive, so he's gonna come up with another, another option. So he'll probably bring it, bring it up to, to his mayor and consul later on. But we do need to do something about that, because we, we were standing there for a while, and there's a lot of traffic, a lot of tractor trailers going there, and they all dodge the, those holes there and the incoming traffic. And it's, it's very, it's kind of dangerous, you know.
Can we do the southbound lane, maybe, just by itself, after the road?
I think that's all we...
Have you done, John?
Mr. Mayor, we're, we're looking at that option. That's the side of the road that's failing.
Yes.
The most, there is a little bit of failure on the, on, on the northbound lane, but it looks like the majority of the southbound lane is failing and expression in that one area. But Mr. Guerra's gonna look at it and see, and see what we can come up with. There's several different options. The, the problem is that the, the ground underneath the roadway is failing.
Yes.
And fails, they've even seen water coming up, finding where the water comes up. So we're gonna have to look at doing, I think he said something like seven or eight inches of A, A B, and maybe even soil cement in it, mix it in, and then put asphalt on top of that. But it's, it's not an easy patch, in other words, so...
Yeah, and then, if we get a heavy produce season, it's gonna be a tough one to do.
Correct. So it's, it's a challenge.
It should be done.
We'll do a challenge here.
Yeah, and I think the, the other problem was is because the road kind of leans to the right, you know, and that's why all the weight goes to that side of the road. And...
The problem?
Yeah, so the other thing that we were, we were talking about is making a temporary lane, you know, just because there's this, there's an area right there in that, in that, on the north side, right?
Right.
There's an area that we can, you know, open it up for, for traffic while we...
While repair that.
Yeah, while we repair the other side.
That's a good idea.
Do like a temporary road沿 on it, Mayor.
That's a good idea.
So, yeah, that's, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Consulman, do you have anything?
You know, last week, we had our, our EBT meeting, sir, and going pretty good. Basically, one thing that they're really pushing, and us with having to border with our employees, we're gonna start getting, again, the, the employees, all the prescriptions, the relation, the differences of medications that, that the insurance receive, treatments and stuff like that, so they could up, on, on site, see, oh, costs, how, how much in US, how much in Mexico, see if it's a cost saving for, for the city and the employees. I think it's going pretty good. I think we have a good group of, in the CBT group that, that we, the trustees get together, and I think we're looking at positive things for, for the employees and for the, for the insurance. And, you know, I think the same thing, you know, with these trailers and all that, Mariposa's getting very narrow for a lot of traffic.
Yes. And with all that work?
Yes.
Let's see what we can look at, see if John can take something there. Consulman Verona, you have anything?
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Consulman, Hanesian?
No, nothing, thank you.
You don't want to say anything about the elections?
Nothing at all.
Sure?
It was, it was a good election in the county here. There was a lot of, as Mr. Verona has so eloquently stated, there was a lot of crookedness on the part of, of the Biden group, but, you know, what can I say? That's his opinion.
And he should know.
He should know, yes, he should know.
Who has their phone on? Who has their phone on?
Consulman Diaz, you have anything?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna come out, comment on, on the VFW. We're, we're working on, I'm doing a monument in front of the Wall of Honor for Veterans Day. You were at the meeting.
Yes.
So we, we went to Home Depot, and we got a donation of supplies. They were like five hundred dollars to build a base and all that. So it's gonna be a monument of the Iwo Jima, flag raising Iwo Jima. So we're working on that. We should have it ready this week sometime. And we're gonna need a banner from, from your office, the Thank You Veterans Banner, and maybe a little help coordinating where we're gonna put it and a little all there.
We need to contact the Boy Scouts, too, so they can put the flags.
Put the flags up in front of the...
Put the flags in front of the sidewalk, Consul.
Okay, so yeah, I can get a hold of Steve Meyer and have him do the, do the flag for the...
And the reason, members of the council, the reason that monument's gonna be placed there is because of, of not being able to have a ceremony like the one we have every year for veterans because of the COVID. So it's a, it's a decision that Commander did at the VFW and, and the veterans that were there. So just so that we can have something there for the veterans, so people can see how important that day is. John, since he reminded me, could you jot down there that we can have a, get a banner done, you know, for Veterans Day, to place in front of the wall? Kind of like the banner that we have for, for the Corbella Park, something like that? That, about that size, muscle metal, so that you can place there for the November eleventh?
So who can work with the design banner? You, you all that?
You can call, Consul, you can call, or, or, you know, all it has to do is basically say, you know, either Happy Veterans Day.
Thank you, Veterans.
Yeah, Thank You Veterans, or something like that, you know.
Okay, who will come up with something?
From the city and the VFW, or something like that sort of, so that people can see that. Go ahead, John.
Sure.
All right, thank you. All right. Anything, anything else, Consul?
No, that's, that's...
Consulman?
Well, I have to report that we did have a Dia de los Muertos event in coordination with Nogales Mercado. It was a very good event. It was socialist, everything went just perfect.
Right.
And I want to thank the charity department for, for taking care of the light tower. They were the ones that helped us with that.
Light tower?
Yes.
Didn't you get it from Borja Patrol?
No.
No?
Well, we asked Tony, and Tony said, "I'll take care of it."
Oh, okay.
Perfect.
Perfect.
Worry about it.
That's good.
That's the only thing I had to report.
Okay, okay. All right, I did a few things. On October the first, I had a meeting regarding possible movie production in Nogales. So I, it was a Zoom interview and, and meeting with writer and one of the producers. So hopefully, we can get another movie coming to Nogales next year. On October seventh, I had a meeting with Rosana Gavardón, now State Senator Gavardón, and we talked about the border, we talked about traffic, and talked about one eighty-nine. On October eighth, I was interviewed by a TV from France, twenty-four interview regarding the border wall. And then I had a radio multimedia interview regarding border crossing restrictions, for the different... October fourteen, I had a meeting with a potential developer and investor for Nogales. And just so you know, tomorrow, I'm, I'm going to Phoenix. And I'm gonna go and, and talk to these people. I had a conversation today with Noelia García, and he's one of the persons that, that needs investors to be able to help them develop. He has people that are willing to bring business to Nogales, more into the maquiladora distribution type business, which is good, so that we can have more jobs in Nogales. So I'm gonna take his information and relay it to these people, and hopefully I can get somebody to come to Nogales and help out. On October fifteenth, meeting with the Mariposa Youth Coalition regarding anti-tobacco campaign. I'm gonna bring this to you, to the council. I can see this, huh? Yes.
Yeah.
On December. And it's to prevent smoking in our public parks. And, and they did a great presentation. It's a high school students, and, and the person that's in charge of them at the Mariposa Clinic, they, they did a Zoom with me, and a great presentation they did. Talked about tobacco, they talked about how important, how important it is for us to watch our kids and children with secondhand smoke. And also, not only that, but the littering of tobacco, butts and everything. So I think it's time that we, as a city, do something like this, you know, especially when you have youth coming to you and asking for, for support or something like this. So, you know, I'll, I'll be bringing this to you as a, as an agenda.
Yes, is that, is that gonna include proposition two, sir, Mayor? There's gonna be a lot of smoking in the parks.
Yes, that, it's probably gonna be a combination of.
Right, we're, we're going to address that as well.
Mr. Massey's gonna work on that, too.
Right. No, no weed in the park.
Marsen, Marsen.
Mr. Verona?
A drop of tears.
This is Arizona for you. Okay. And then I had the Halsin Cinema interview regarding the pandemic effect on the border. That also on October fifteen. On October twenty-third, an Italian national TV interview regarding border crossing and restrictions. October twenty-sixth, a British ITV interview regarding the border wall and other border topics. So if you go into Italian, French, and British TV, you'll see your mayor there talking about Nogales. Wish I was talking about economic development, but they wanted to talk about other stuff. But that's what I did this month, so... Does anybody else have anything? No? Yeah? Okay, we'll move on to you. Let me see. Oh, we got about eight more items. Do your agenda items. I don't know. You, you wanna put anything for this number? No, go ahead.
Mr. Massey, we had a little discussion at our last meeting in October, and I'd like to get a written legal opinion from you. I'm just, I was a part of the discussion twenty years ago on enacting city management. But what I, I know what the intent of it is, but what I'm trying to figure out, so the mayor and consul aren't put in a bind, and it would help if he was to leave with written legal opinions, when the six months ends, something that we never discussed, is in case we're in a, the mayor and consul are in a predicament, what is the timeframe when that individual can come back to be enacting city manager?
All right, I'll, I'll look... All right, I'll, I'll look in, I kind of have an idea. Let me look into it. It doesn't explicitly say though.
No, it doesn't, I can't remember.
So, but I think the idea is we have to live with, with the intent
Yeah.
of that, uh, restriction. And so what, and, and make it a, a living, you know, document so that we're not just cutting corners or skipping edges. So, so let me, let me look into that. That'd be really good.
Because I know that Mr. Kissinger's term expires at the first meeting in December. So we need to do something, or if not, Mayor, maybe you could get in and call for a special meeting so that we can just discuss that one item. What are we going to do on that day when his term expires? Unless Mr. Massey's written opinion gives us some leeway where he can stay on maybe sixty days. I don't know.
No, no, I'm not going to, uh, probably say anything like that.
Okay.
So I think we need to plan on.
You asked for that.
His, his six months is up. His six months up, we have to move on.
Okay, so then if that's gonna be the opinion, then I would suggest that we have a, a special meeting this month so we can come up with some ideas. What do we want to do for the next meeting to have an acting city manager for what, two, three, four months? And so we're not cut off guard.
Like I told you last time, I'll take it.
Yeah.
For free? Don't need, don't need a charter?
You have to get.
Unfortunately, the, the Charter says that, uh. No, that, no.
You'd have to, you'd have to resign.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
No, you have to, yeah. Well, you have to resign. You can't be the, the city manager and the mayor.
Right, no, no.
Okay, well, we're gonna have a special meeting.
Yes.
We'll spend the money.
John, Mr. Hanesian could take it.
Yes, I can.
I know you could. No, you know what? You can't either. No, you can't. Because you have to be out of the council for two, two years.
No, that, that's before you can run again if you're termed out, so.
No, 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 I'm talking about being employed by the city.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Really?
You have to be out of the, the, the position for two years before you can get employed.
I think it's one year.
I think it's just one year. I think it's one.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm trying to help you out. Okay, any, anything else? No? Motion to adjourn?
Come on, move it.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Director.
RC, did you read the last little deal I said?
I read it.